It is now 7:00 PM. Can I have all the aldermen back, please? It is now 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and start our council meeting. Can I have all the aldermen return, please? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Felix.
Present.
Newsome is absent. Turner.
Present.
Donaldworth is absent. Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Madam Mary of Accra.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have a special guest. We will have our invocation by Apostle Bill McNeely from Liberty Temple Full Gospel Church in Zion. And we are so excited to have him here. And thank you for being here this evening. And just to warn Alderman Hayes, we're going to do pictures from the corner, so you can come up as far as you want.
Don't get my bald spot, please.
God bless you to the city council. I'm honored that you would have me tonight. And I'm honored that God would use me. I just want to direct your attention to Psalms 127. And it reads, "Except the Lord build the house; they labor in vain that build it. Except the Lord keep the city; the watchman waketh but in vain." So let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you and praise you. Lord, we thank you that your word declares and teaches us to trust in you with all of our heart and all our ways to acknowledge you. And you will direct our path. Now, Father, I just thank you, oh God, for your favor and grace upon the mayor and the council and the city of Waukegan, oh God, in Jesus' name. Lord, we praise you, oh God, for a godly righteous council. Father, I thank you, oh God, your word declares that when the righteous rule, oh God, the people rejoice. And when the wicked rule, the people mourn. But Father, we thank you that this is a city of joy, a city of favor, a city, oh God, that's changing lives. We thank you for your progress, oh God. We thank you that you are building. We thank you for safety, oh God. And Lord, I decree and declare in the name of Jesus that no weapon formed against this city shall prosper. And even every tongue that would rise up against it shall be condemned in judgment. And we give you the glory, honor, and praise that you are the author and finisher of our faith. Amen. All the believers say amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Believe It or Not, the October 21 City Council Meeting. It's hard to believe we're already coming towards the end of October. I'm going to start off tonight with some speakers. Last time at our last meeting, our fire chief, Greg Paiser, was supposed to give us an update, and there were some other things going on. So Chief Paiser, would you come up and give us some updates from the fire department? What this is meant for? We alternate meetings. He usually gives it at the beginning of the month and Chief Navarro at the end of the month, just so that you know what kind of calls the city is getting. So Chief Paiser, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council members, for allowing me to speak for a minute about the Waukegan Fire Department. So far this year, the Waukegan Fire Department has responded to 10,300 calls as of today, which is about 200 calls ahead of where we were last year, which was another record year for us. Of these calls, 67% are medical calls. Of the medical calls that we have had, we've had 92 cardiac arrests, 291 calls for alcohol use, 161 drug-related calls, 940 traumatic calls that have gone to Vista, and 94 trauma calls that were critical enough to take them to a Level 1 down at Condell. We have used our Lucas device, which is a mechanical chest compression device that helps first responders give automated chest compressions to patients in cardiac arrest 84 times. We've also given 132 doses of Narcan on drug overdoses. We've had an exorbitant number of calls to nursing homes, behavioral facilities, and extended care facilities in town this year, making up 721 calls, or 81 times per month, to just seven different places in town. This puts a tremendous strain on our services because many times we send both a fire engine and an ambulance to these facilities because of the nature of the call. We had four significant structure fires in September totaling over $89,000 in damage. And for the year, we've had over $14 million in damages from fires in town. Our department is very training-oriented, and this is reflected in our training numbers totaling over 38,000 hours for the year for our members. Our Fire Prevention Bureau has done an incredible job this year doing 3,355 inspections to date. They have also done 44 occupancy inspections verifying permissible occupancy levels of businesses. We just graduated two more bomb technicians from the six-week FBI-run academy down in Huntsville, Alabama. We have 10 members in paramedic school at Lake Forest Hospital. We have two of our members who are actively working with the Waukegan Public Schools, teaching our kindergarten through third graders about fire safety and fire prevention. And last, as you know, Fire Prevention Week was October 8th through 12th. And we were able to visit 20 different schools throughout the city and speak with children of the city of Waukegan. The Waukegan Fire Department also hosted an open house on Saturday, October 12th, which was a huge success. Thank you to everyone that came out to support us and help celebrate not only Fire Prevention Week, but also the 175th anniversary of the Waukegan Fire Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Paiser. Again, if you went to the open house, you saw the phenomenal work that our firefighters and paramedics do. So, you know, to imagine the number of calls that they have. One of the things that we are currently looking at is we are noticing through our garbage pickup of all things that our population is increasing. So we are, even though through the census, we only receive money for this city for under 90,000 people, we project we're servicing 130,000 at this point. So that is about $3 to $4 million of income that we are losing from not having accurate census numbers. So when we come knocking on your door and ask you, you know, how many people live here, the reason we're asking is for that reason. Please help us out by responding to those things because it makes a big difference in the services that we provide. Next, I'm going to invite up Waukegan Deputy Chief Neal to talk about the police department and the number of calls that they do and the types of calls that they're responding to. So Deputy Chief, we're going to put you on the spot tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, guests, and residents. Mayor, I do not have the number of calls, but I do have updates on very significant cases that are going on in the city involving the police department. I would first like to speak on the homicide investigation from September 17th in the early morning hours, about 1:00 AM. We were able to make an arrest in the senseless murder of a female victim who was returning home from work. This case is ongoing. I can't offer any other information, but that was a significant break in being able to charge and bring an arrest upon someone who was involved in that homicide. In addition, on October 3rd, at about 10:40 in the morning, we served a search warrant on a business at 3042 Sunset in town, a licensing company owned by a Ruben Collier. As a result of that search warrant, we were able to close down a business that was offering fictitious license, temporary license plates, temporary licensing services, and had defrauded many of our residents who were not knowing of the business being illegitimate at 3042 Sunset. We're asking that if there's any resident who has been a victim who wishes to come forward, to please call our hotline for this investigation with our traffic unit, which is 847-599-2567. Again, we have a phone number that we would like anyone who has been a victim of services at 3042 Sunset to please call 847-599-2567 if you wish to be included in the investigation. Thank you, Mayor.
Again, I want to say the city has invested heavily in flock cameras. And a lot of our crimes are being solved because of flock cameras or giving us valuable information that we are then using in investigations. So I can't say more than that with these being ongoing investigations, but I do want you to know that. Next, I'd like to call up our dispatch director, Thomas Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening. I want to talk about a call. On October 10th, Thursday, at 10:14 PM, the 911 center received a 911 call from a resident reporting a female screaming inside of a car in the area of Ash and Franklin in the parking lot next to Cribs Grocery by the dumpster. On Friday, October 11th, it was brought to my attention that the police were never dispatched to this call. After an investigation that I conducted as to what happened and why this was not dispatched, it was discovered that we did not dispatch the call. The call was missed, and it's for a two-part reason. One of them being a GIS issue, which is the mapping software or programming that we use, which we now share with the county, which is directly related to our CAD system. So Ash and Franklin is an intersection of Waukegan. We share a countywide CAD system. Ash and Franklin does not exist anywhere else in Lake County. It's a Waukegan-only intersection. It is in the computer system four times. It should only be in there once. So when you type it in, it doesn't verify as a valid address. You have to go in and choose one, which is an extra step, which the dispatcher did not do, causing us to miss the call. We did look. We did not have any similar calls in the area during that timeframe. No hospital reports of any type to indicate a victim of any sort of crime. And our original complainant never called back, asking where the police were. So all that being said, it was thoroughly investigated. My department takes responsibility for missing the call being dispatched. We understand the severity of it. We know that when somebody calls 911, they expect a response. And that not happening is a distrust to the public. So the only comment I will make is that the dispatchers involved have been disciplined. And we will continue to train and work on procedural issues that will prevent this from happening in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that particular call is still being investigated by our police department. Some general remarks. Trick-or-treating is already this Saturday in Waukegan from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. Keep an eye on social media.
Sunday.
What did I say? Did I say Sunday? Oh, I'm sorry. It's definitely Sunday. I'm sorry. I thought that's what I said, but no. It is Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00, October 27th. Again, it's during daylight. We don't want the kids out, running in the streets in the dark. Please enjoy this holiday. It's so kid-friendly in our city. Please take advantage of it and enjoy it with the kids. There's been a lot of things going on right now in the city. We've had a lot of trunk-or-treats. We've had, the Park District did an event at Bowen Park. Halloween is big in Waukegan. Please have those kiddos out there. Let's see them in all their costumes. Residents are reminded that the seasonal yard waste collection runs from March 15th through December 15th. So those of you who have bought seasonal stickers or individual stickers, that program ends on December 15th, along with the extra recycling and stuff that you do. But you normally put your garbage out, but yard waste and that will continue with recycling, and that stays around for the rest of the year. In addition, we will be starting leaf pickup. We started today. We did a practice session. Some of you might have seen our video last week, but we started today in the 7th and 8th wards and will continue now until probably December. It changes a little bit depending on when the leaves fall. But I want to remind residents, there is no waste burning. That is strictly prohibited in the city of Waukegan. So that means leaves, brush, trimmings, paper, garbage, any combustible materials is all illegal, both on public and private property in the city limits. So again, even those fire pits, let's not be putting stuff in there like leaves and that kind of stuff. Again, I will say, I'll say it again and again, leaf pickup started today. We are, we did this video last week where we talked about, do not block fire hydrants with your leaves. rake them to the end of the parkway, but not into the street. Make sure that the cars are not parked in front of it. Make sure that you're not blocking poles or anything else, or mailboxes, because drivers still need to get in there. They are using LRS, does not rake leaves. They use like a big suction hose to pick it up. So they promise they will keep on schedule as much as possible. What you're seeing right now is not a ton of leaves falling yet. I think we're going to have it closer to the end of November, where you're going to see us out really pushing to get those last amount of leaves done. Don't put leaves in plastic bags. If they're bagged, the bag must have the sticker on, so then you're going back to where it's in the recyclable bags and it's marked. If it's not, and you just want it picked up by the leaf blower, you rake it to the end and make sure that it's clear of everything. On October 22nd, 24, at 10:00 AM, the Lake County and the cities of Waukegan and North Chicago will host a workshop for those interested in submitting a human services application. Please arrange to have a person most directly responsible for administering this program or writing your grant in attendance at the workshop. The workshop will be virtual. The log-on information will be available in the 25 human services application. Please get in touch with Cynthia Jackson at 847-599-2530, or email cdbg@waukegan.gov by 4:00 PM Friday, October 18th. But you can still do it today or tomorrow. So make sure you get that in. Many of you heard that we lost a significant community member. He was a longtime business owner, Danny Deek, the former owner of the Waukegan landmark Booners. He passed away last week. I've asked the family to be in attendance this evening at the council meeting, which they are. And they will be asked to share some thoughts during audience time. They will also tell us what the funeral arrangements are because we have not been given that information at this time. So we will give a resolution on November 4th honoring him. And so, is family not here?
Yeah, here.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and include them now if they'd like to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and the council. I'm Emily Deek Correa, and this is Michael Deek. And we are the niece and nephew of Dan Deek, also known as Booner. And my uncle Dan was born and raised on 313 Julian Street, and he's a lifelong resident of Waukegan. He attended Immaculate Conception for grade school and graduated from Waukegan Township High School, where he excelled in football, wrestling, and baseball. He went to Camden Junior College, and his junior college football team won the Rose Bowl, the Junior College Rose Bowl, in Pasadena, California, which was a story we heard often about. He got a football scholarship to Drake and then earned his bachelor's degree shortly thereafter. He was a volunteer coach in Waukegan for the youth football and for Waukegan High School, Waukegan High School football team. He married Barbara Westcott, and she's also a Waukegan lifetime resident. And they were married for 54 years. They just celebrated their anniversary on October 2nd. In the mid-'70s, my uncle Dan opened the Starlight Lounge, which he later changed the name to Booner's Place. It's a place where people gathered and a place where stories were told. Booner's Place provided many jobs for many Waukegan residents over the years. My uncle Dan sponsored countless adult softball, volleyball, and basketball leagues and fundraisers for Waukegan sports and youth athletics. Booner was considered the mayor of Washington Street. He was a stranger to none and a friend to all. He was known for his motto of saying, well, I'm going to pass it over to Mikey because he says it best.
His big motto was, "Waukegan, good people, my people, all right."
Yeah. The visitation is going to be Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 at Peterson Patch Funeral Home. And the services will be Saturday, 1:00, at St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Waukegan.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening. We know this is difficult, but thank you for being here. And again, if you didn't catch that, it's Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 at Peterson Patch Funeral Home and Saturday at 1:00 PM at St. Paul's. And again, we will do a proclamation at the November 4th city council meeting. The Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony will be held on Monday, November 11th. The parade starts at 11:45 and the ceremony at 11:00 AM at the Veterans Plaza downtown Waukegan. If you want to participate, please call 847-599-2525 for the application. And at this time, we do not accept horses in this parade. This is a smaller parade. We don't have the cleanup crew for it. So, but if you would like to be in the parade, please let us know. As always, you can find events and more on the city's calendar at waukeganil.gov and our social media pages. You can also sign up for notifications through eNews@waukeganil.gov. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Clerk Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. You have three proclamations this evening. The first proclamation we're going to read is Proclamation, National Friends of the Libraries Week in Waukegan, October 20th through the 26th. Whereas the Friends of the Waukegan Public Library play an indispensable role in our library's success by raising vital funds through membership drives, I'm a proud life member, book sales, and special events that support library programs and services. And whereas through their dedicated work, the Friends of the Waukegan Public Library are able to host a successful and well-loved summer concert series, support enhancements of programs, and spaces for young people, and provide an opportunity for collaboration and camaraderie to its members, library staff, and patrons. And whereas the Friends of the Waukegan Public Library's management of book donations and book sales gives a broad access to the books to our residents and help fill the little free libraries and support city-wide environmental awareness and recycling goals. And whereas the Friends of the Waukegan Public Library understand the essential need for strong and well-funded libraries and advocate for the resources necessary to ensure that libraries remain a vibrant community of, excuse me, to patrons of all ages, identities, backgrounds, and interests. And whereas the Friends of the Waukegan Public Library demonstrates exemplary commitment to volunteerism, civic engagement, and illustrates how volunteer efforts can improve the quality of life for everyone in our community. And whereas the contributions of the Friends of the Waukegan Public Library strengthens our community not only by enhancing our libraries, but also by fostering a spirit of giving, collaboration, and shared purpose. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of the city of Waukegan do hereby proclaim this week of October 20th through 26, 2024, as Friends of Libraries Week in Waukegan, Illinois. It encourages our residents to extend thanks to these dedicated volunteers for their invaluable contributions to the enrichment of both our libraries and our community adopted this 21st day of October, 2024.
Thank you. Come on up. Come on, Jennifer. Come on, Tiffany. I think everybody knows how phenomenal our library is. And it's the work of everyone here that makes our library be phenomenal. And so today, we want to recognize them. But this is just a sample of today. It's always the work that you do proud of. So thank you very, very much. And I'm going to go ahead and give this to you. And then we'll do a picture, and you've got all the aldermen behind you, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start the next proclamation.
Yes, the next proclamation. Erie Health Reach Waukegan Day in Waukegan, October 22nd, 2024. Whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan opened their Waukegan Health Center at 2323 Grand Avenue in 2014. And whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan is driven to the belief that healthcare is a fundamental human right and remains dedicated to delivering high-quality. I'm sorry, everyone. Whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan is committed to the holistic healthcare and ensures that every individual receives the care that they need from mental to physical well-being. And whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan recognizes the social, environmental, and behavioral factors significantly influence health and has developed programs and resources that address these issues, reducing barriers to health beyond the confines of the exam room. And proactive approach is making a tangible difference in our community, inspiring positive change and healthier lives. And whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan provides people of all ages holistic healthcare, helping every family member stay healthy from infancy through adulthood. And whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan cares for patients between visits by providing unwavering support for their health and well-being. These services include chronic disease management, health education, and linkage to resources like housing, food, transportation. And they are a testament to this commitment. And whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan provides services in more than 26 languages and has trained 80-plus future healthcare leaders and welcomed 2,000 babies into this world. Supporting 2,500 patients with mental health services, distributed fresh and healthy food to 10,000-plus individuals, and cleaned 250,000 teeth for bright, healthy smiles, and conducted 300,000-plus patient home visits in their 10 years of history. And whereas Erie Health Reach Waukegan is recognized for their commitment to the community and in celebration of their 10 years of providing comprehensive healthcare to our residents. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of the city of Waukegan do hereby proclaim October 22nd, 2024, as Erie Health Reach Waukegan Day in Waukegan and celebrates their 10th anniversary adopted this 21st day of October, 2024.
So accepting the proclamation tonight. And for those of you who haven't been to Erie Health and haven't seen what the services they have to offer, I strongly recommend you stop by and visit them because the services that they offer are just phenomenal. The staff is wonderful, and I just want to say how grateful I am to have them in our community and to be one of our community partners. So on behalf of the city of Waukegan, Nancy, thank you so much. This is great. Do you want us to move over? So, yep. I'm going to, yep. Thank you. Again, honestly, isn't that beautiful? Thank you. But I just want to say again, take the time and visit Erie Health because the amount of services that they provide for our community, I think most of you would be blown away if you just went and visited and just, whether it's simple things like having COVID tests available right when you step in the door or whether it's getting services, appointments right away, please stop by and visit them just to see what they're about.
Thank you, Mayor. And then the last one, proclamation: Extra Mile Day in Waukegan, November 1st, 2024. And we just have that in the record and wanted to acknowledge that. And that concludes your proclamations.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk Patterson. We're gonna move on to audience time.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We have four members that are... Or four residents that are signed up tonight. You have three minutes each. When I call your name, if you can please line up to the east side of the room. First, we have Kathy Charity, Kathy McBride, Margaret Carrasco, and Rayon Edwards. Again, Kathy Charity, Kathy McBride, Margaret Carrasco, and Rayon Edwards.
Hello, Mayor, Councilman. Yesterday, a plane landed down at O'Hare International Airport carrying over 200 unvetted illegals. They are being housed with petitions and curtains down in O'Hare Airport. I am praying and hoping that these individuals aren't released into Waukegan like so many has already been. They're overwhelming schools, hospitals, grocery stores, parks, the whole economy. This has destroyed my comfort zone, and I'm wanting to relocate out of Waukegan. Not mentioning the crime, the loud music, booming cars, speeding cars, and shootings are still happening. Panhandlers standing in front of cars startling drivers all over the place. Again, liquor licenses, close them all. They are still being passed. Why? Slots everywhere, near churches, schools, banks, gas stations. Why? But again, they're not American businesses. I guess these places are designed to fail in order to keep city workers gainfully employed. The Canola Restaurant that's located up on Green Bay Road, when you go past it at night, they have a new bright LED neon sign out there that will blind a person. They need to tone their contrast down. Turning right on Washington, going down Green Bay Road, it blinds you. It blinded me. Oh, wait, again, maybe things will change after the election. And for those who are voting, Robert Kennedy is on the ballot. I called the county clerk and asked why. He said because Mr. Kennedy failed to remove his name, according to the state of Illinois. So, he's on it, but he is not running because he's not a candidate. Also, people, clergymen, organizations, and other political influencers, they try to interfere with a person's vote. You vote for who you want to because the truth will prevail. According to Hosea 4:6, God said, "Our people are destroyed from the lack of knowledge because thou have rejected the lack of knowledge, so he will reject you also." So, I'm just trying to let everybody know, when you vote, vote correctly. It's not about 501(c)(3), people who's trying to say, oh, you vote one way, one agenda. No, vote right. That's all.
Thanks, Ms. Charity. Kathy McBride.
Good evening to the City of Waukegan Board, the community. Almost two years ago, I was diagnosed with panic anxiety disorder. So, I am writing to you tonight to bring to you, to your attention, a deep concern that is actually happening here in Waukegan. While I have no issues with the migrants that are entering into our communities, my concern lies with the government and the handling of predatory landlords in our community, which are pushing out U.S. citizens to the brink of homelessness. On September 11th, I attended a meeting with the leasing manager of Whispering Oaks, where I reside. The leasing manager, upon me entering, I was informing her that I was bringing my emotional support animals paperwork that is necessary in order for me to keep her there. With my dog in my arm and my phone in the other hand, I remained calm as the leasing manager began yelling at me. She said, "I don't care what you have going on with your son. I just want you gone. If you're able to move within 10 days, I won't put an eviction on your record." I stood up. I told her I did not agree with her decision, and I proceeded to try to leave her office because I was feeling threatened and very overwhelmed. I tried to leave her office to deescalate the situation. However, as I tried to leave, she aggressively shoved an envelope into my chest and arm, violating not only me, but my personal space. Her actions were not only unprofessional, but also physically intimidating, adding to the distress in an all-ready, vulnerable moment. This kind of treatment is absolutely unacceptable and highlights a growing problem in our city where predatory landlords exploit vulnerable tenants, especially those with personal or family challenges. We as citizens of Waukegan deserve better protection and better support. Our government must step up to ensure that no one is left at the mercy of these predatory landlords who weaponize housing insecurity in order to profit off of other people's misfortunes. Additionally, I would like to take my remaining three seconds and just ask for one minute to please...
Thank you.
...keep in mind that yesterday has been four years since Marcellus Danette was murdered by Waukegan police. Thank you.
Ms. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. That's being... Picture photos being distributed. If you recall, a couple months ago, the president of Apacel Club, Armando Pena, stood here swearing that Eural Vera's concerns that he brought out to... To bad Alderman Edith Newsom's not here, about their new club site on 1428 West Glen Flora, the former Office Plus building, were lies and not true. Well, 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 folks. Tonight, I have a picture that was taken just this past Friday night packed with vehicles at nine o'clock at night. Wasn't that one of the conditions, Ann? That they were not supposed to have any evening events, parties, or anything like that? Well, so much for that. I guess Eural was right. Next, I don't know, is George Bridges around at all? I don't see him. Maybe he's hiding again. But anyhow, talk about taking photos. Waukegan residents have noticed that the construction machines that were at the off-track bedding are the same machines that now are seen at another two work sites. And Waukegan residents want to know, does George Bridges, is he connected to, or his wifey or anything, getting any kind of financial benefits from those projects? And when I went to Big Ed's, I noticed the fence, that's where the former Millot is, there's no permits posted, nor... Actually, all those sites that they... People talk about that George is connected to, allegedly, there's no permits posted. And another source said that they overheard Georgie telling the electrician over at Ant Mount that he did not need to get an electrical permit. They had very major electrical issues there, and you don't need a permit. Must be nice. So, I see, you know, it makes people think, well, what's going on here? And the last thing is that kudos to every single person that was involved with the event on Sunday for the dog vaccination and microchipping. And this is just an example of how, when the city does work with the community, does communicate and reach out, you have a huge success, okay? It's too bad it's taken you three and a half years to get it. But thank you, and kudos, and it was a great event.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, Council. I'm gonna have to piggyback on what she said, and this is why I talk about conflict of interest and things of that nature. Come up to this podium, and I've said several times that your chief of staff shouldn't be on the board. For somebody that have lived in this community that used to shop at Hostess Grocery Store when it was a bread store, and they went out of business, that building was very inhabited. That building was not operational. And like she said, there is an electrician that went up in there. All those permits was not done. You got a car wash over there. You had hair being done over there. But this is what happens when you have an inside. As George said to me, if I come up here and say his name again, he gonna cut my access to the city. That's what he said to me on a phone call. It's disgusting, and it's bad business. But tonight, I want to ask you, Mayor, because I've had the fortune of sitting in a courthouse as I always do every week. And I think when you had to come in yourself and the previous mayor being sworn in for Ken Kelly, and I know that Stu was with you. And I'm asking myself why, and we're on city time. You should have had your own attorney with you, not him. Because, let me finish, because we shaking heads. Because if we gonna play at that game, then this city should be responsible for Janet Kim Kelly's attorney fees because that was city business. And I'm gonna talk about that a little bit. Because now that I've sat through this, it was very personal. Because I sat there and I listened to that state police get on that stand and say that he did a full investigation about what was going on. How do you do a full investigation about anything and you don't talk to the previous administration? Even me as an ex-criminal know better than that. It was a poor investigation. An investigation was never done. What I'm saying to y'all is while we playing politics, people suffering. While we playing politics, real shit going on out there. While we playing politics, people are dying. Have you rode through the city of Waukegan? Because every week on every corner, they begging for money for funerals. They so aggressive. They walks in the middle of traffic. You could go anywhere on every damn corner and gamble, buy alcohol, and almost eat on every corner. Is the health department inspecting all these places? I feel bad for restaurants because they're gonna be put out of business because we let people serve.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Appreciate it. Mayor, that concludes your audience time.
Okay, on to consent agenda. Can I have a first and a second for the consent agenda?
Motion.
Alderman Turner.
Second.
The second was?
Guzman.
Alderman Guzman, okay. First item, item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on Monday, October 7th, 2024. Item B, a motion to approve vendor payments dated October 21st, 2024 in the amount of $3,451,473.76. Item C, a motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated October 18th, 2024 in a total amount of $2,316.89. Item D, a motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated October 18th, 2024 in a total amount of $64,629.9. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed, Mayor.
Thank you. There being no reports or old business. Item seven, new business. Item A, we will not be voting on tonight. There are two days left to submit public comments, so we will consider that on the 11/4/24 agenda. Does anybody want to do a...
Omnibus.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
I have one to pull.
Hayes and Florian. Mayor? Yes.
May we pull out C? My objective is to hold it over.
Oh, wow. Item... And can we hold out U? What was? Q? U? U is an under. Okay.
I just have a question about holding over C.
You have what?
I just have a quick question about Alderman Bolton's hold... Or not. You wanna hold over C? Is that what you said, Alderman? I just wanna make sure it doesn't have any employment ramifications or implications since we're voting to renew a contract.
My constituents and a few calls I've received that they have questions in reference to that, so I need time to answer those questions.
Have you reached out at all because you had an automatic briefing and nothing was mentioned?
Some of the individuals came tonight, so...
Okay. So, I just want everybody here to understand that her contract ends at the end of the month, and there's been no questions up to now. So, when her contract ends, she cannot work on grants then until you renew the contract, which means we have pending grants that will be stagnated.
Mayor, I'm just... I'd like to interrupt. That's been pulled from consent. I think it would be appropriate... From the omnibus, I think it'd be appropriate to discuss that after you deal with the omnibus.
Okay.
And the holdover, Mayor, you can make that motion after we deal with the omnibus.
Thank you.
So, the items that are being omnibussed are B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, and T. Okay. We're starting now. Item B, did I get a first? I did a first and a second. Okay.
I'll make the first.
We already have them. Item B, an ordinance approving to dispose of various surplus vehicles and equipment through O&amp;F Auction Services. Item D, an ordinance approving to recycle chassis from Auto Parts City for a flat rate from capital asset disposal. Item E, an ordinance approving the recycling of three leaf machines with Cleveland Recycling for a flat rate for capital asset disposal. Item F, a resolution approving engineering services from Jawalt Hamilton Services, Inc. for segment number two for the FY 2025 road program for a not-to-exceed amount of $185,925. Item G, a resolution approving engineering services from Jawalt Hamilton Services for segment two of the FY 2025 sidewalk program for a not-to-exceed amount of $121,995. Item H, a resolution approving the procurement of road salt from Compass Minerals America per Section 2-458i3, joint purchasing through the State of Illinois CMS Services Contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $655,000. Item E, a resolution approving the procurement of liquid deicer from Industrial Systems for Section 2458i1, sole source is not-to-exceed amount of $45,000. Item J, a resolution approving the award of water plant, switchgear, and SCADA upgrades bid to Bowler Construction Company in a not-to-exceed amount of $2952,800. Item K, a motion to approve amended and restated IGA with Park City for Water. Motion to approve... I'm sorry. Item L, motion to approve a settlement agreement between the City of Waukegan and Park City for unpaid water usage.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I... Is it too late to pull out N?
Is it too late, Stu, to pull it out? We haven't read it yet.
We haven't read it, so... Basically, we have a motion. We had it established. If the folks who made the motion and seconded it consent to that being pulled, pulling out N for discussion.
I just have a few questions.
Okay, so N...
Sorry, I won't object.
Item N is being pulled out and will be discussed...
Thank you.
...along with C and U.
Okay. Item O, a resolution approving the acceptance of a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Patrick Lee Hee Bullproof Vest Partnership. Item P, a resolution approving a partnership agreement with the Brushwood Center regarding an Environmental Protection Agency Community Change Grant. Item Q, a resolution approving the procurement of a generator and installation services for fire stations one and five for an amount not to exceed $113,880. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving an agreement with Sea Grave Fire Apparatus LLC for the refurbishment of a rescue squad apparatus in an amount not to exceed $273,166.89. Item S, a resolution approving a... Item S, a resolution approving a lease agreement with Ballard Marine Construction LLC for a portion of the water plant parking lot property. Item T, a motion to approve staff to pay the annual, uh, Visit Lake County Partnership contribution in an amount of $35,830.
I don't know if you read M. Did you on the culvert replacement?
No, I did not. Thank you. Item M, a resolution approving design engineering services for the Pershing Road Culvert Replacement from Seura Group per section, uh, 2458, uh, professional services in a not to exceed amount of $85,249.47. Okay, um, that's all the ones under the consent agenda. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Um, item C, um, is there any discussion or?
Share with us what her?
Hold on, hold on, we need, we need a first and second.
Okay, first.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And then Hayes.
Can you share with us what the concerns are?
So, uh, some of the constituents, and I, I was sharing with them as well, is that most of our departments have their own grant writer. Why are we paying outside kind, you know?
We don't have grant writers in the departments. Do an individual, yeah, but not all.
Right, I thought it was some, yes.
No, but they don't, they may submit for a particular one, but they're not looking at all of the grants together. That's why we, we have somebody specific for that, to look for those. So a lot of them have routine grants that they go after every year.
Yeah.
But they're not looking for new grants. So that is her purpose. And we've had her now, is it, is she still here? Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole. Um, you've been here two years? Okay. Did I answer everything, or is there something you wanna add? Okay.
So I believe Alderman Turner and Guzman.
Alderman Turner?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Alderman Donenworth called and specifically asked me to hold this one over in that he and both Alderman, uh, Newsom are absent tonight, and I agree with him. I think we should have a full council present to meet on this, and I would like to hold it over to the next meeting.
I don't know if Alderman Donenworth can do it, though, if he's not here.
Well, I'm asking for it. I'm asking for a holdover.
Could we amend that and put it, uh, an extension to her contract for two more weeks? So, um, she can still keep going on it?
Excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Cause I mean, she did write $2 million worth of grants. I mean, she's already paid her services.
Okay. So we'll amend it to the next city council meeting. And then, at that point, you need to make a decision, or the contract will end.
I think my, if I could, my question is, Alderman Guzman, you made, or you raised a really good point. Uh, she gave us a presentation a few weeks ago about the incredible and mind-blowing work that her, that she has done for the city over the last two years. Um, the quick math on her salary is it's about $114,000. So we're paying somebody $114,000 for 2,080 hours of work to, uh, get the city millions and millions of dollars in grants that we were not otherwise getting before. So, holding something like this over only hurts us. I understand you may wanna debate it, but I can't think of one good reason that we wouldn't want to not only renew her contract, but hire more individuals that can do this. Because this, we are the ones that are benefiting. We have everything from lead lines to superfund sites to crumbling infrastructure. And all of these grants go to helping the city. They're small grants, they're large grants. It doesn't matter. It's money in our pockets that we didn't have to tax people for. So, I, I mean, at the risk of delaying the meeting, I, I would make a motion to, uh, overturn the holdover and, and see if we can just vote on this tonight. I think it's to the benefit of all the residents, and it's certainly to our benefit, because none of us have time to go looking for grants, and our departments are already taxed to the max. So I don't know why we would try to put the onus on them to do that.
And I will remind people that, um, we pay her a salary, but we do not pay benefits, because she's a consultant.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So, Tom, thanks again. And you always make these great points, but I'd like to think I make some counterpoints. And I, I am not, um, addressing, uh, Ms. Large it directly. It's not her birth, it's not her, it's not personal. But the fact of the matter is, she was hired to do a job at a certain rate. She's done her job, and so she's being compensated for that. Uh, but the second point I'd like to made is, make is that we wait till the end of her contract to say, let's give her a big, huge bump. We could've done this several weeks ago and had that discussion. So often, when we make decisions based on a compressed timeline, we gotta hurry up and rush and make a decision, we don't allow ourselves time enough for consideration and discussion and so forth. Um, I think Alderman Guzman made an excellent point, excellent suggestion, that we extend her contract by two weeks or a month and allow us time to have discussion. And again, I reiterate that, uh, Alderman Newsom and, uh, Alderman Donenworth should be part of this discussion. I'd like to hold this over, and I hope you'll support me.
Um, let's put that in there, because I don't wanna drop grants that we're currently working on. Um, so we can do it, um.
Can we, uh, he did make a motion to override the, the hold.
So, there was a, a request from both Alderman Bolton and Alderman Turner to hold this over. On the rules, and once again, I'm gonna read the rule, because it's really weird, um, that every ordinance or other matter coming before the city council shall, at the request of any member of the city council, be held over until the next regular meeting before a vote is taken there on, unless by the consent of all member, by the consent of two-thirds of all members of the council present, the same shall be taken up for immediate consideration. Tonight, we have eight members present. The mayor counts as part of the city council. If there is a motion and a second to overrule the holdover, um, it would require 5.333 city council members. We round up. So it would require six votes to immediately consider this con, um, so we have a, a motion to overrule. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. So this would be a vote to overrule the holdover. It would require six votes, mayor votes.
Before we do that, is there any way you guys would consider it, uh, because everybody, I feel everybody's, um, opinion should be heard and, and be voted on. Would you guys consider putting that on hold and then still extending her contract until this is done? Until, for a mu, another month?
Can you do it in two weeks?
Or two weeks? Or two weeks?
Let's do two weeks.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion to hold it over, but I feel pretty strongly about this, which is why I made that motion. I, I think it's important, so.
That's why.
I just wanna make sure that point is made.
I wanna make sure she gets paid, because she's done good work.
Yeah, I'm trying to make the compromise, rather than a month, let's do two weeks. And that's in the middle of everybody here. So can we go with November 4th meeting that it would be voted on?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I, can I ask someone to make a formal motion?
Yes.
To postpone consideration of this for two weeks till the November 4th council meeting? And that the terms of Ms. Large's contract be ex, of her current contract be extended through and until, we'll say, November 5th?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, yes. Okay, um, roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Felix.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Do I vote on this? Thank you. Item N, can I have a first and a second to the motion?
So move.
Okay, um, Alderman Martinez, second, um, Alderman Felix. Um, this is a resolution approving a professional services agreement to provide redevelopment planning and strategy development for the former OMC site with Sigma Group. Um, can I have Director from Planning and Zoning and Economic Development come on up? Okay, did you have a question to the motion?
Yeah, cause I know that this wasn't, um, it was mentioned in our briefing, but we didn't go over it.
Okay.
So, wha, what's the amount of that, uh, professional services that we're gonna be paying for?
Out of TIF number seven.
And, oh, who is, uh, the Sigma Group? Who, who are they?
Sigma Group is an environmental engineering consultant. They're based in Milwaukee. Um, they're the consultant we've been using for our, uh, operations and maintenance monitoring. On the site, it's a superfund site. Um, so we have, as the owner of the property, we have some maintenance responsibilities. They've been doing that work and are more familiar with the site than anybody, um, I've met during the duration by far. Significantly more familiar than the current US EPA staff assigned to the site. So they will help us look at what's remaining on the site, help us through the remaining regulatory processes, draft the soil management plan that we've been waiting on the regulatory agencies to draft. We'll go ahead and draft it and present it to them instead, so that we can accelerate the timeline on making the site redevelopment ready. Um, and they'll help us with some assessment and surveying of the remaining issues on the site and whether we can reconfigure some of the remaining contaminants to make more of the land developable. I think it's a bargain.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure you go over it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Noel, this is part of a long-term project for the rehabilitation of the OMC site, correct?
Absolutely, yes. OMC site remediation began in the 1980s. Um, the North Plant Site on the north side of Seahorse Drive has been substantially cleaned since before COVID. Um, but with US EPA retirements and reassignment of staff, we have a new project manager who's working with us and learning the site. We have now a city team, not just two or maybe three people scattered around, um, that have some information and knowledge and are working with US EPA. But we have an actual multi, multi-departmental team working on advancing the site for redevelopment. So Sigma will support that, along with, um, John Antaramian, who we have under contract, under, under a separate contract, um, who has extensive experience in, working with US EPA on getting redevelopment sites across the finish line to development.
That was part of, uh, the reason why I wanted to hold it, uh, not hold it over, uh, to bring it up. Um, how close is John working with this group, or how do their, um, uh, what they're doing, how do they overlap?
Um, so John's expertise is more on the development side and negotiating deals and working with the regulatory agencies as a former legislator and mayor, um, state legislator and mayor. Um, his experience is, you know, working with the legis, with the, sorry, the, um, regulatory agencies to come to agreement on terms and that kinda thing. Um, this group, the Sigma Group, is technical experts. They know what's in the ground, they know what it means, they know how the federal regulations apply to it and what you can do and not do. Um, so how, they're more of the physical side, and he's more of the deal side.
So they are, are they working kinda together, or are they going to plan to?
So, we don't have the Sigma Group yet for this contract. So once we do, um, assuming that you approve it this evening, then, uh, John is part of our environmental group right now, and Sigma will join that then to talk about these particular sites. So they will work hand in hand and help us move it forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Thank you, Noel.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item U, a resolution, well, can I have a first and a second, first of all?
So move.
Second.
Um, Alderman Martinez and Alderman Hayes. A resolution approving a professional services agreement for public art installation. Um, I believe this was discussed in Finance and Purchasing Committee, so Alderman Florian, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little concerned. Mr. Capheim came to us at Finance, and, um, he's a very well-respected artist in the community. He knows a lot more about art than I do. I'm gonna admit, I know very little. Um, I'm just concerned, because he's making it sound like when this grant was announced, and, and the way it's written is not necessarily the way it's being processed. I don't know what word to use. Um, can you explain whether that's true or not?
What, you want me to start, or you will?
Okay, I can take it, thank you. Um, so I apologize that I wasn't in the room when he spoke, but I believe from hearing members of the committee talk and, um, some of the members of staff who were in the room, um, it, it, I believe that he is talking about, um, the project, the RFP, that was put out for the, what we call the identity sculpture, which was intended to be, um, very large letters. You've all seen the, like, I heart NY thing, that's a big sculpture. Um, if you've been to Cleveland, they have the word Cleveland written in script. That's a sculpture. I was just in Alpena, Michigan. They have the le, big letters, seven foot high, that spell out Alpena across a park there. Um, that is the type of, uh, project that we had intended. When we first put out the request for proposals, we did have a typo in the amount of funding for it. The September 4th addendum, um, listed the budgets as $160,000. Um, that was a typo. There was, in fact, a change on September 5th, the very next day, to correct that to $125,000, um, for that project budget. Um, that project is not the project we're asking for approval for tonight. We've had multiple art pieces out in the community. The identity sculpture, the murals, the crosswalks. The approval that we're requesting tonight is related to the murals. We had 16 submissions for the mural RFQ or RFP, um, proposal. This is just one of those. None of the artists that have submitted have been denied at this point. There's been one selected by the committee, a group of, um, a number of us, including people from the library, the Arts Council, um, city staff, ha, that have reviewed the submissions, and we've selected one so far to go on this building and the, across from the lobby on that blank wall, right below the wall behind you. Um, so that's the one that we're requesting your approval for this evening, Mayor.
Right. I'm sorry. Alderman Felix?
To address some of, uh, Tom's concern, uh, we will announce once we're, i, if we're planning to do another project like that, right? I mean, I know that you guys announced for this specifically, that's why we're voting for it. But we still, and we don't have a lot of time, as, as I, I understand. But you guys will announce for the next thing that we're gonna be looking for artists for, right?
Absolutely. Um, we'll issue RFPs for any of the future artist things. And like I said, on the, on the identity sculpture, we haven't made a final determination on the murals. We haven't selected all of them yet. There are negotiations with property owners, um, helping them work through the process when we have multiple submissions for their wall, helping them make decisions. And our requests to you are in conformance with the city's purchasing policy.
Just, Noel, it may be easier just to say, this is a separate project, separate RFP. They haven't, they haven't selected anyone, they're, they, you have not made a selection yet for the, the sculpt, for the word sculpture.
That is true, thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody's paid attention, but I think this has been repeated like three times, that this is a separate one, the sculpture's different from the mural. And that's why it was, um, pushed forward on, on committee.
Alderman Florian?
Wow, that's interesting, coming from someone who likes to say things over and over, but I'll let that go. Um, so, um, hi, his concern is with this project as well, not just the sculpture. I didn't make that clear. He's saying that he feels, just because it says it's public art, doesn't mean any art outside is public art. And that's his concern. So, a, as an artist, he's saying he doesn't feel this qualifies as public art just because it's outside and it's in the public, I guess, is what he's trying to say. So it wasn't just about the sculpture, although initially that was what he said. He ran out of time at the end of his three minutes.
I'll be glad to have a separate conversation with him, but, um, you know, I'm a firm believer, art is in the eye of the beholder. There are a lot of things that I love that, for example, my husband doesn't, and lots of things he loves that I don't. And I think it, you know, when a group of people come together and review submissions, and there's some cohesion, and they're thinking about what fits Waukegan and their proposal request, and, you know, maybe what doesn't. Like I said, nobody has been denied at this point. There's just been one selected of the 16.
He did say to me that he designed a mural for that location and was asked for more information on his proposal, and he gave that, and then he never heard back. So, that may be part of the problem. And he gave that and then he never heard back. So that may be part of the problem.
So we had multiple requests to do this particular wall. So again, the group scored submissions and this was the one that came out highest for this particular wall across the group. And so that's the one that the reviewers have selected. We can't offer anything to anybody else without council approval. So if you don't approve this, then we can go back and look at what scored next highest for that particular wall. And if it's over $25,000, we would bring it back to you for approval. And if it's not, and I don't remember off the top of my head which one it was and what the, what the amount was. If it's not that amount that needs council approval under our purchasing policy, then we would just approve it and move forward. But this was a group selection, not an individual selection for this wall. Like I said, multiple people submitted for some of the walls and some of the walls had no submittals requesting them. This is obviously a popular wall because lots of, lots of people come in and out of this building. It's very visible.
I have a question. I guess one of his complaints was the fact that it was 150,000, but then it went down to 125. And you just mentioned it was a typo. How did that happen or what, why was that missed?
So that's not this wall. That's a different project. That's the sculpture. We're all human and we, you know, we can put eyes on documents over and over again. And inevitably, somebody can miss something. It was corrected the very next day, which is, and before the end of the submission for questions, which was September 6th. So, you know, all I can say is I didn't catch it either and I was one of the last set of eyes on it. So it's my fault.
I will say on his behalf, he is very reputable. He has, I went to his studio. It's amazing. I mean, he's given a lot to the city. So I hope there is a favorable solution, a resolution.
But just because, I think what I want to make clear in this too is just because you're an artist in this community, there's a lot of artists here. And we have to give everybody a fair shot. And that's what the committee is for, is for them to have those objective eyes. Because again, we don't base it on your reputation and we don't base it on, you know, do we like, we can't favor an artist because that's not fair on the city's part either. Alderman Turner, you were next.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So as far as these murals are concerned, I've received numerous, I mean, a lot of complaints about these murals that were painted in the crosswalks downtown and up on Julian Street.
May I interrupt you Alderman?
And?
Alderman Turner, may I interrupt you?
I'd rather you don't, please. So a lot of neighbors have contacted me, folks from across the city who object to the murals being painted in the crosswalks and most vehemently, the paying tax dollars to do it. And, you know, observations or, yeah, so people are saying that, and I tend to agree with this, that, you know, you put it, put those, the paint down there on the ground, it's being driven, driven over, walked over. And then winter's coming, the snow is going to get on it, the salt and de-icer. And then you're going to scrape it with snow plows. The suspicion is that it's not going to be very nice.
So can I ask you, who told you that tax dollars were being used for this?
The people who are complaining about it. Then you pay tax, then we pay, get a grant and use tax dollars to paint the murals on those crosswalks.
You want to address that?
This is part of a grant that we received specifically for downtown art.
Where did that grant come from?
This one is a federal grant.
I'm sorry, where?
It's a federal grant.
A federal grant. Federal government is funded by tax dollars, then they give it to us. So tax dollars were used to paint it.
But that was part of getting lead line as well. So we couldn't have.
So Mayor, Mayor, please let me finish. So a lot of neighbors are complaining about the tax dollars being used. Regardless of what bucket they come from, whether it comes from federal, state, or local, their tax dollars are being used to paint the ground. They've also contacted me, not as many, but several still have contacted me specifically about painting a mural on the wall on public property. So I'm just conveying to you what has been conveyed to me, all right? If I got my own complaint, you know you'll hear that, right? But anyway, that's what I want to convey. There are a lot of objections that have been brought to my attention. And a lot of folks have asked me to vote against that, the spending these monies. And in good conscience and in representing the public, I cannot vote for it and I will not. Thank you.
Can I see?
Mayor, if I may just make the comment that I was going to interrupt Alderman Turner with. And that is that, again, this is, this request is for the wall murals, for one wall mural, not the crosswalks. Okay, you're welcome.
And I would say as much as there's, you know, what you think you're hearing is negative, we have had a lot of positive feedback from it, that, you know, we are an artist community. There's a lot of people who love the art. Some I enjoy more than others. But again, that's the whole purpose of having multi-artists where, you know, everybody kind of gets a different look at things. This is something that was part of a grant for lead service lines. They gave, Nicole may remember better than I do it, I think it was 1.5 for lead service line. And then wasn't it 400 and something for art?
For art across, across the different category.
And that all went together as part of the grant. So if we wanted, you know, we're seeking every possible avenue we can for lead service lines. So, you know, if this comes with it, we, we do it.
Is it fair to people who, I mean, this is public property we're painting. And as Noel said, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. So is it fair to all of the taxpayers in Waukegan that a very small percentage of them would force the painting of public property using tax dollars? Why don't we just leave it as it is and you put your murals on private property? Put it on your house or Noel's house, put it on somebody's house or side of a business or something, but not on public property. That would make more sense to me.
Because isn't that part of the grant that it has to be on?
There are various locations identified for murals. Some of the buildings are public buildings, like this one, where we have a blank concrete wall that, if I recall correctly, when the building was built, was intended to have a covering on it and never got that covering. So, you know, many of us think it would look nicer as something that's not just a gray concrete wall. A lot of communities are using art as an economic development tool. There are lots of people who travel to see public art. And so, you know, it's a way to bring a segment of the, of the population to our community to see things that are happening. It won't appeal to everybody, just like the hockey that I love doesn't appeal to everybody. So, you know, there's something for everybody and art is one of the things that makes Waukegan great. We've had an outstanding, long-time arts community. We have a lot of artists that live and work in our community. We invested in Carter Art Space Lofts as the city to bring an artist residence building right into our downtown. So it complements all of those things, but it's not everybody's cup of tea and that's okay. That's part of what makes Waukegan great. We're diverse and have diverse interests. Not everybody likes everything and kudos to them for speaking up.
Alderman Felix, did you have a question?
Not question, just a comment. I mean, yes, I, I back that as well. Like every, not everyone was happy, but there's a lot of people, not just the usual people that you hear about, other people came out of the community to be part of this. And those are the people that we want to bring more people out to be part of this. And again, not everyone's going to like the art, but, you know, overall, it does, that's why there's different areas, different types of art for people to enjoy. There's good examples of other cities that are doing it really good, like Kenosha, downtown Kenosha. There's different places where it's not only, to come down to the downtown areas, not only just to, for, it'll be an experience to be, to be part of. And so, and again, we got a grant for it. So it's, it's money that's given to us for these things. And you're saying, well, from what I'm hearing is some people don't want us to use that money for that specific thing. I think it doesn't make sense. I think it, we should utilize as much as we can to beautify our, our city.
Alderman Guzman?
I agree with Alderman Felix. I mean, this is a grant, it's not only attached to art, it's also to lead line service. I mean, and what Nicole said, Director, Nicole, sorry.
It's okay.
Said, it is very true. It's art is on the eye of the beholder. Look at the Mona Lisa, the three magicians, the three musicians, I mean, paints by Van Gogh, Picasso. I mean, a lot of people hate those paintings and some people like them. I was like, uh. Some I like, some I don't, but it's on the beholder. I mean, some are worth millions of dollars. But art is art. It's the expression of a person and what you see inside the art and what it brings out inside of you. And other communities are actually doing it. And they're actually doing a very good job. And I don't see why we should not be doing this. I think, I think it should be done and move forward.
Why do we remove graffiti then? It's all art, right?
It's not part of the grant.
Yeah, but it's beauty, it's in the eye, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Somebody paints graffiti on a stop sign
Without permission.
or a wall, why do we remove it?
It's without permission.
It's in the eye of the beholder. And it's free.
Why don't they do, why didn't they do that graffiti in their own house? Exactly.
Let's go ahead and take the vote for this.
Please.
Okay, roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, please, yes.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. This is Alder Purton time.
Alderman Martinez.
Deputy City Clerk and also counsel, I just want to talk about a couple of things that I, events that I have attended. Last Friday, I did have the privilege of attending the 21st Annual Coalition to Reduce Recidivism. It is a group based on social service agencies, faith-based organizations, educational and criminal, justice institutions, and many other intenities in our community. Their mission is to reduce recidivism by assisting ex-offenders and becoming productive members in our community. Special thanks goes out to Chairman, Mr. Mark Jones, and the many founding collaborators for making this great organization possible. Also, I attended the annual, well, 60th Annual Edwin Montano Memorial Scholarship Banquet. This scholarship is named after the late Edwin Montano, who was a leader and a pillar in the Latino community. His vision was education as the key to success. And so therefore, it was very successful. A lot of, a lot of people received scholarships. So congratulate each and every one of them. As the mayor had mentioned, leave pickup. Just a reminder that on the third ward, our leaves will be picked up on October the 28th and the 29th. That is on a Monday and a Tuesday. Please rake leaves to the front of the curb. And in November, it will be on the 11th and 12th, again, on a Monday and Tuesday. For more information, you can log into the city's website. Also, as the mayor had mentioned, checkered treat again will be this upcoming Sunday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. More importantly, please enjoy and please slow down, heed all warnings, and please be very mindful and extra careful. Also want to thank Public Works for the work that they will begin in the alley located behind Grand Avenue and Leith. The whole alley will be repaved in its entirety. Also, I just want to address the excessive trash accumulation located at the strip mall, the Grand Plaza East between Leith and Berwick. I have requested plastic garbage bins to be installed on Grand Avenue. And so therefore, there's a lot of trash that appears there, especially with a lot of the liquor establishments, especially when they close. For some reason, they're leaving bottles out there and it has become a problem. It's been brought to my attention. I have personally spoken to each and every business owner and they do know their responsibility. And they seem to like to blame each other. So it is an ongoing thing and I will be monitoring that more closely. If something comes out, something positive comes out, I'm hoping it would, I will let my constituents know. Roadwork, this continues to be on Metropolitan University Avenue. Work began last Friday. Staging equipment, excavations will start this week. We will maintain adequate traffic control to ensure safe passage through the worksite. Please heed all the warnings. For the moment, I'm holding back on speed bumps. I, I'm open to all options, however it does. Has its pros and its cons, so I want to see what information we gather. I know Alderman Turner has them on sixth ward, so I am very mindful to see what, what, what comes out of that. And I'm not closed, not having speed bumps, but I, I will have to do my research and my homework to see what decision I will make and get the feedback from my constituents, most importantly. If you need to get ahold of me, I can reach at 847-390-2689. I just ask my constituents to be safe, be mindful, and let's all be good neighbors. Good night.
Thank you, Alderman Martinez. Alderman Felix?
Thank you. I did also attend the Edwin Montano Scholarship Event. It was great. I mean, I wish more people from the community would attend. And besides just politicians, which I got to see a lot of politicians. It was great to see everyone, people that are active in the community. But it'll be great to see more people involved in there besides just politicians. Because it'd be great for them to also know about these scholarships that are there. Not only just young people, also older people got scholarships, which is great, you know, continuing education. And we should promote that. But it was a great event. I got to see everyone having a good time, a lot of good food. I have been doing a lot in my ward. I've been focusing on fixing the neglected areas. And if you guys will see, along the bike path, now it's cleaned up. Before it was abandoned vehicles. It was, there's a dumpster there. So a big, big shout out to all of our team, code compliance, traffic. Within three weeks, we got that cleaned up. But it does take some homework from our end, from Alderman, to look at our codes, to make sure that we're also helping out, you know, pointing things out that they can do. So we got the bike path cleared up. There's a new light post also installed in, on Washington that was broken. The whole thing got replaced. We have another, on Butrick on Washington, we just did a parking lot, parking lot end. Part of it got done. Recently, I asked for the trees to get cut up higher. There's trash cans there now because people go to the bars over there, they leave a lot of trash. Little things that I, that I'm focusing on to make sure that my, the fourth ward is looking a lot cleaner. There's a lot to do more, but I'm definitely focusing on the small things. And I'm really enjoying seeing the, the change. So kudos to Chief of Staff Bridges, George Bridges. I go to him with a big list and for the most part, he tries to handle it as fast as possible. And I did tell him, you let me know when it's too much. And so far, I meet with him either every week or every other week. We also did again, a fire hydrant replaced because it was leaking. That was today. I put submission like last week. So things are getting done. Also, if you guys notice something, please reach out to me. There, in terms of, I've had a lot of conversations in my ward about crime. Crime is, is not just a simple, hey, call the police over. There's a lot of things that have to do with it. But keep calling me. I'm having a lot of meetings. On my end, it just marinates in the back of my head and see how, what I can do, what could be done. Talk to the people slowly but surely. You know, we'll have a solution, at least to make it safer. Speed bumps and, the speed bumps are traffic control devices. I'm still looking into it. I'm looking to more have a, the, the thing that reads your, your speed and lights up. That's something more I'm looking towards. But if people are looking and wanting speed bumps, I'm definitely open to it. But, you know, I want to use other options before I use the speed bumps. And shout out to Mike Morales. She's always sending us pictures of the events. So I always have pictures to update my Facebook for all the events. He attends them all. He also sends me also pictures of things in my ward sometimes, so I get those taken care of. So shout out to him. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Felix. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Clerk. All right, so in the sixth ward, regardless of this police call, it was not, not dispatched on October 14th. I received a call from the caller, the person who made that call. She was very upset about having no response. I talked to her about it and brought it to attention of police administration. I understand it was an investigation. My observation though is that no one ever got back to me or the caller with an explanation of what happened. And I think it's very important that we communicate with those when we're having these observations or complaints. The person that is complaining should be contacted and the situation explained to them. So I will contact the caller after this meeting and explain what was explained to all of us. But in future, I would encourage direct contact. Two, this, no, number one, I will have a ward meeting next Thursday, the 30th. I haven't decided as of yet exactly how I'm going to do it, where. I haven't decided as of yet exactly how I'm going to do it, where, and I may push it out a little bit. Regardless, information will be posted on social media and direct email. Speed bumps, I have not received a single complaint, not one complaint about the speed, speed humps down on Franklin Street. I have received numerous requests from all across the city. People are asking for speed humps and, and I'm encouraging them and I'll say it now again, please contact your, if you're not in the 6th Ward, please contact your Aldermen with your request for the speed humps. At some point, I'll try to make a list and pass it on to Alderman, but I just don't have a bandwidth to be the central point of collecting those requests. Leaf pickup in the 5th and 6th Wards will be on October 23rd and 24th. Please get your leaves to the curb, not in the street, but at the curb and then LRS will come around with the big vacuum cleaner and get them. And finally, I was informed a dear friend of mine, and not just a friend, but a mentor early, early in my entry into the political realm, Mr. Jack Potter, who was longtime, lifelong resident of Wakegan and Gurnee, passed on Saturday. Jack, it was, it was Jack's suggestion that sent me into a council meeting to ask why we were paying property tax, such high property taxes and the, the yellow curb didn't get painted over on Jackson and Glen Flora. And that, that began my journey into politics. So I miss Jack tremendously and my heartfelt condolences out to him and his family. And there will be a celebration of life held here in Wakegan. Jack moved up, retired and moved to Dodgeville where I would go hunting in. But the celebration of life will be held in Wakegan and I will release that information as it becomes known to me. And another thing before I get, we have completed several street resurfacing projects in the 6th Ward. We're wrapping up on North Avenue now. Rizlin is completed. We also completed two alleys between Walnut and Chestnut and the 1300 blocks. Excellent job, Chris. Kudos to you and your team. And we did a cleanup at Longview and Lorraine and thanks to Youth Build. So that's what I have. Thank you all very much for your attention and have a good night.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. I also attended the Montano Scholarship Event. It was a great event, especially because they were celebrating the 60th anniversary. They highlighted a lot of former recipients and, you know, as usual, there's so many amazing stories to be told in Wakegan about how people progress through life and with help from agencies like the Puerto Rican Society and it's just amazing. So we, I also attended the Safe Place Event this past weekend, an organization, one of the only organization that works with people in the county dealing with domestic abuse, both male and female, children, adults. They do an amazing job. They are now in the process of procuring property to have a facility that will house enough people, hopefully, to help them help even more people than they are already. Also, in the 8th Ward, the first Habitat House is being built ever. I had the privilege of, of going and working on the house a couple of weeks ago. If you haven't ever done that, I encourage you to try it. It's pretty amazing. It's very hard work, I'll say. But I'm, I'm proud to have helped contribute to the building of the house and I intend to go back again as soon as I have a chance to do it. It's being, it's called a woman-built house, so they're trying to use as many women volunteers as possible, as well as female contractors to do the work. And it's going to be for a single mom, so that's all very exciting. It's on a piece of property that was an abandoned home for about 20 years that the city finally tore down. I didn't think it was ever going to be built on because it's a very small lot, but Habitat is putting a 1,500 square foot house, three bedrooms, I think two bathrooms, but it's going to fit just enough. It's going to be a small yard, but they're going to have a nice house. I also had a tour of Public Works last week. I encourage any of the Aldermen who have never done that to make time to do it. It's very interesting. There's a lot going on there. They, they really try to stretch a dollar. One of the guys in the repair shop told me, he hired someone recently as a welder and in his application process, he asked him if he could weld rust and the guy laughed. And then when he got hired and started working, he said, oh, now I know why you asked me if I can do that or not. So when they ask for equipment to be replaced, it really needs to be replaced. They've run it through the mill, so I encourage you to go look at it and also see the number of, of vehicles that are just stored over there. We wouldn't let anyone else in town have their property look like that. So we need to work as hard as we can to somehow find a way to, to clean that up over there so that it doesn't look like it does. But anyway, I encourage you to go see for yourself. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Florian. Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
Thank you, Alderman Hayes. Alderman Bolton.
Thank you. I'd like to present Wakegan Proud Award to Curtis and Catherine Morris for 70 years wedding anniversary. So I applaud you. I will be presenting this to you. This will be a surprise, but I thank you, David Motley, for helping me put this together. Yes, and I'm sorry? Yes, you can see it. Yes. Seventy years. Huge milestone. Thank you so much. And then leaf clean, cleanup will be October 30th for the first ward and October 31st. And I want to encourage everyone to go on wakeganil.gov. On there, don't forget they're doing a facade improvement, those that have businesses. And then also out every week, I thank Public Works for, almost every day I'm making a call to clean up the first ward, especially on Eighth and Adams, where they always clean up mattresses and furniture and it's just a mess, but I really want to applaud them. Every time I request, they're there. I want to thank Noel for allowing me to sit with the department and committees and staffing. And I'm here often, every week, a little bit more with balancing my other jobs, but just taking the time to understand my responsibility more. And then today, I was with one of our food shelters, Blessed Trinity, meeting the director, understanding the soup kitchen, understanding better how things work. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Bolton. Alderman Guzman.
Good evening all, and to the second ward. I want to start off with the leaf pickup. We also, our first leaf pickup is also on the 30th and 31st of October. The second one will be November 13th and 14th. And I'm very pleased that we also get the last pickup on November 27th and 29th. But remember, these are estimated times, so they could be off a little bit, but they'll get there. Okay? I, I've only, at, when this whole thing started about the speed bumps, I had a bunch of people talk to me and then all of a sudden, I don't know if they disappeared or what, but I only have now two people. So we're going to wait until the spring because they're going to start pulling them out anyway. The streets I'm looking at right now is Greta, Fulton and 8th Parkway. So if anybody in the second ward is, is listening, please call me up, 847-390-2690, so we can discuss, see where else we could put this. A few things. I had a couple complaints and issues that were taken care of and, you know, I, when they call me and it's like an emergency. I, I'm not 911. I can't move everything like in an instant. You got to give me some time. It takes, you know, Public Works is very busy. They have eight other wards to take care of, but it will be taken care of. It's usually taken care of within a week or so, but it goes on a list and it goes from there. And then for some reason, I mean, I don't, I, I, I drive by and then it gets taken care of and then I never hear from the person again. It's kind of cool that you just call back and say, thank you, it was taken care of because, I mean, I get tons of phone calls, so and then I forget about the person and then I don't get a phone call back and I don't know what's, what happened and all of a sudden, I, I remember my wife tells me, hey, whatever happened to that guy? Like, oh yeah, I forgot about it. He never calls me back. Then I drive by and it's taken care of. And, you know, Public Works, thank you very much for taking care of it, but I mean, you know? Next, I, I mean, I'm glad, I want to say I'm glad that Grant Ryder got, extended her, her contract time because, I mean, before, before the Grant Ryder was, we had a Grant Ryder, we missed a lot of opportunities, a lot of money was missed and $2 million is nothing to sneeze about and, and I'm sure we could probably be doing more, but at least it's a start and we're getting money back. So, you know, I, I hold stuff over and I want people to respect my holdover, so I respected their holdover and I'm very glad at least that she will still be extending her, her contract and going forward and she still will be paid and grants will be moving forward. Next, I want to say about Alderman, I'm going to have an Alderman meeting at my house on November, on November 16th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So the address is 2300 Pearcell, P-E-A-R-S-A-L-L Parkway. I will provide water, coffee, little snacks, so we could talk about what's going on. And I will be dropping off flyers to people's houses so we can get a, a lot of stuff talked about, about what's going on in the ward and what's been moving forward. What do we got? I think we have about three more weeks and the asphalt plants have closed. I think the street program has been huge. I mean, a lot of blocks have been done. I mean, I mean, I don't think in the city, there's been this much that has been done. I mean, seriously. I mean, and without a grant or being asked to borrow money, that is the biggest part. Remember that. We had money to redo your streets and nothing was borrowed. That's an amazing aspect, amazing achievement that has been done. And it's taken a lot of work. It hasn't been a one-year thing. It's been taking cuts, it's been moving money around, it's been grants, it's been saving money and this is how it's done. Okay? So I'm very stickler about money and this is why every time I propose something, I always add a fine or I always add a convenience fee or I always add something because I see we need to start looking for three and five years down the road. We're no longer a year-to-year city. So I'm very happy about the purse or the wallet or whatever you want to call it. Okay? And that's it for me tonight. Oh, school's still in. Don't forget. School's, still, school's still in, so don't forget about the school buses. Don't go around them. When they have their little stop sign, wait until the actual bus takes off before you take off, you could run over a kid. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Guzman. And I'm going to take that as a thank you for making, that we finally got these roads done and we have done it, as he stated, with dollars and not borrowed dollars. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second. Okay, did you get that, David? Yep.
Aye.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.